Good evening.
Hello.
Hello. Tuesday, April 11th, is a meeting of the Board of Selectmen, 6:00 PM. I'll call this meeting to order. You all rise and salute the flag. Fledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have no minutes for approval tonight. Approve the warrants. I'll entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number 21 for $347,344.88. General warrant number 1053 for $313,671.20. And school warrant number 1052 for $146,798.83. Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Financial items, we have two ARPA project recommendations. One is for $296 to purchase AED pads and batteries.
You already did that one.
We did that one?
Yeah, so it's the library and then there's one behind it for the school, sorry.
Okay. All right. So the library. Air purifier, hotspots, owl and monitor, what's the owl?
Um, it's for...
360-degree camera, mic and speaker.
For meetings.
Okay. And the monitor, is that one? I'll entertain a motion to approve $4,624 of ARPA money for the Hayston Library air purifier, hotspots, owl and monitor.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Nope. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have another one for $4,000 to fund through June 30th, the new recycling program at the North Brookfield Schools, which will bring the schools back into compliance with DEP and state requirements. The requested amount was reduced following receipt of the original letter, as initial quote included non-recycling waste removal. I'll entertain a motion to approve $4,000 from the ARPA account to the new recycling program at the school.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
This is for bins, for the recycling paper and other things for them, which they haven't had? They say dumpsters, is that, does that bins?
I think it's actually a dumpster. It gets as large as a dumpster outside. But I'm not positive on that.
And then signage and literature.
Okay, I'm just thinking, so people can put the right thing in the right bin. What is it, a bin or a dumpster, that's what I don't understand. Do we need, do we need a dumpster there? Or is this bins?
Well, I'm sure they're not large dumpsters, it's only $4,000.
Right, yeah, okay. Just a question.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All business. Highway equipment vote. So, at the recent town meeting, we voted for $208,000 for a new mower for the roadside. And we found the same model that only had a few hours on it for $130,000. And it had the same warranty as the new one. So we voted last week to approve purchase of that and save the money. But there was a request put in by the highway superintendent to add what's called a stump jumper for $5,000 to that. It's to keep the thing from hitting stumps that are buried in the twigs and brush on the side of the road. So we need to approve, vote to approve that if we want them to get that or not. So that would bring the total for that machine up to $135,602.13. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the purchase of a stump jumper as well.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion?
I don't think so.
They had one on the old one, so I think it's a necessity.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All business. So two weeks ago, we voted to approve the use of the town common for a pride event, and that pride event included a drag show. And at the time, there wasn't enough information to deny the drag part of the show. But after doing extensive research, we've got some information that would prohibit the drag portion of that show. So before we talk about that, I'll entertain a motion to rescind the vote to approve the pride event at the common and further vote to approve the pride event without the drag show.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. I have prepared a statement for the discussion. This board is not trying to regulate anyone's existence or freedom of expression. Our aim is to ensure that any event approved for the general public will not even inadvertently harm anyone who might possibly attend the event. While there may be drag performances that are not centered on illicit behavior or intended to be sexual, the majority of these shows do include sexual innuendo and behavior that exaggerates all aspects of the individual's sexuality. To wit, drag shows should be deemed adult entertainment. With that being said, this town has a prohibition on all adult entertainment except by special permit. Only in the industrial zones of this town, currently all the zones mapped as industrial have existing businesses occupying the majority of the space. If one of those businesses wishes to apply for a special one-time-use permit for adult entertainment, they may do so through the regular channels allowed by our town. There will be no adult entertainment, including drag shows, drag readings or any other drag performances without an approved special permit prior to the event. For more information on adult entertainment regulations in our town, please see our zoning bylaws, including Table 2, Reference Table of Uses by District on page 16 of our current bylaws, as well as page 25 of the bylaws, which prohibits any adult entertainment in the downtown overly district. Further discussion?
Nope, I'm good with that.
Yes, I don't, I don't think it's adult entertainment. I mean, it's freedom of expression. I've been to these events, I've never seen anything that's been, that's been unsavory to anybody, and I trust that our police force would enforce anything that's unlawful or adult in nature. That's where I stand.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I just don't understand how it can be family-friendly, because I believe it is adult entertainment. And if you want to see me in a speedo go down to the playground, that's adult entertainment, and I am not, I'm not gonna do it. I'm just saying.
I've never seen anybody in a speedo in public.
Whatever they're doing, it's wrong, in my mind.
Thank you for that, John.
That's an opinion, though, and people do have the freedom of expression. So I think it does set a precedent when you say, no, you can't express yourself in a certain way. So now, do we put regulations on other events that are happening in town that other people are offended by? I mean, I don't know. I'm not the one offended, so I don't know.
Yeah, but if it's in the law that you can't do it, then it can't be done.
But what's the definition of adult entertainment? I haven't seen anything at a pride event that falls under adult entertainment or anything that's sexual in nature. And I'm saying I have not seen that, so...
Hold on, hold on. All right, we're just, everything has to go through the chair. All right, there's way too many people in here for everybody to start getting irritated. So it was recommended to me at our last meeting, two weeks ago, that I go on and check out the videos from the ones that were in West Brookfield. And while the performers were, that I saw on air, they weren't fully clothed. The gestures and some of the comments and things were not something that, you know, should be out in the common where, you know, kids are gonna be playing and... I just, I feel that it's not appropriate, so... Anything further? Nope, I'm good. Anything further?
Nope.
The motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
No.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so Ashley, if you could let them know that that happened tonight, because I don't see any of them here. Chris Dunphy.
He's not here.
He's not here?
Tentative, but he didn't...
Okay. Is anyone from the Board of Health here? Okay. All right. Public comment period. Okay, she was first, then...
Tony Matthews, 53 Grove Street. I want to address you specifically, because what I had was a presentation to show excerpts from the event of last year that I don't know how you could see as not profane and indecent. There was one incident where the lyrics of the song were suggestive. And if you want to go with that, you know, we hear suggested lyrics all the time. So there's that, kids sing along, whatever. The second incident of the video that I wanted to present was, there was the performer pulling off of his skirt and the crowd cheering to that, and so that he was standing in a leotard that was ill-fitting and with a bottom part that, he had tights underneath, but it was ill-fitting. And then the third part was the gestures done by the performer who rubbed his hand over his top part and then did a Camer symbol and then rubbed his hand across his bottom half. And I don't know how you think that that's okay for children living across the street from the common to be seeing in the middle of the day as they look out their window. And I live across the street from the common, and I am very glad to hear that it's not gonna be across the street, having to be on the lawn in our town.
Mrs. Arnold.
I'm here for a different reason, if you'd like to continue with anything else.
I mean, we voted, so we probably don't get...
It's been voted on, it's done, so go ahead.
Okay. I have some new information on our water problem that I believe will change your mind, I hope so. As you know, there are several covered water courses, pipelines and storm drains in North Brookfield that were constructed by the sewer and water departments and paid for by the town during the years 1900 to 1902, as recorded in the town reports. These were called underdrains, which allow water to be diverted into the newly constructed town storm water system. One of these underdrains is one that crosses our property. And another is an underdrain that was built to drain the common way back when, which was a swamp back then, since we're talking early 1900s. It's a much longer structure than ours, beginning at the common, heading across Gould Street, running behind the church, through Hannaford's parking lot, across Grant Street, then continuing through several backyards on Gilbert Street, crossing Started Court and then continuing along East Brookfield Road. The town records show that in 2014, this longer pipe way failed in the same way that our pipe failed. It became clogged with roots and debris and broke. In the same way, it also caused flooding that affected two properties, one on Started Court and the other at 61 Gilbert Street. On October 24th, 2014, the selectmen set a precedent when they held a special town meeting to fund the repairs of the Gilbert Street infrastructure project. Article 10 was approved by the town voters for the amount of $16,000. Precedent was also set when the town used that money to fix the failed pipe way on Started Court. In the same way, the voters at three separate town meetings voted Article 16 to repair the pipe way on our property in the amount of $22,000. As you may recall, the select board denied these votes on the grounds that the work would be done on private property. However, the Gilbert Street infrastructure project, I believe, set a precedent on the two private properties where a tree was taken down, the pipe was dug up and replaced, and two manholes were installed in their backyards. I would also like to present the board with a precedent setting legal case that is the same as our situation. This is the case of Tracy Nemmett and another versus the Boston Water and Sewer Commission, which was brought before the Suffolk County Superior Court on February 17, 1999. This is an excerpt from the court records. "In an action seeking damages for flooding on plaintiffs, that's the homeowner's property, that was allegedly caused by the defendants, the municipality's negligent failure to maintain a drain pipe that ran underneath the homeowner's backyard, the evidence was sufficient to permit a reasonable jury to conclude that water from that broken pipe, as opposed to torrential rainfall, was an operative and potent factor in causing the flood damage. And that the municipality's conduct, for example, their failure to act despite knowledge of the pipe's defective condition, was a substantial legal factor in bringing about the harm. After trial by jury, the municipalities were each found liable in negligence, and each homeowner was awarded damages on the individual basis. As a note, in September 2002, the homeowners were awarded $100,000 each, a total of $200,000. As you can plainly see, precedents have been set, both in North Brookfield and by a former select board, and more importantly, by a trial in the Massachusetts Superior Court. For these reasons, I am here to ask you to do what is right. I know you've told me before, you've told both of us, that you want to do what is right. And I'm asking you, if we can just, if you can just pay the bill and be done with this. And I'd like to see that within two weeks, or else we'll have to pursue legal."
Well, I did ask you to bring new information, and it appears that there's new information, we'll take it under advisement, we'll look through it all. Have you sent it to us in an email?
No.
Do you have it in an email?
I can send it to you in an email.
Which, please?
I'd be glad to. Would you like the...
Whatever information you have.
I'll send that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have records, you have notes being taken, you have a recording. I was told to go do the research myself. Mrs. Arnold has given you cases? She's given your own annual reports to look up? I don't understand the reason that you want to hold it up more than those two weeks.
We'll take it under advisement, we'll look, we'll look at it. And if it goes along with, you know, the argument that she just gave us...
Two weeks?
We'll get back...
Or it goes to court?
Okay. Anybody else?
Yeah, thank you, Jason.
You're welcome.
Julian Carey, 61 Gilbert Street, as a matter of fact. I didn't come here to talk about my pipes, but since it's been brought up, as Mr. Tripp and Mr. Tryto snow, we had major pipes broken under our property. I don't believe there's any pipes under the Arnold's property that were broken like ours. They were made on clay.
All right, all right.
They were made on clay, like you see the old clay pots? I mean, these pipes were from the Civil War. And it caused flooding in the house, in the cellar, that would go two to three feet, and multiple times. So that's that. The other thing I'm worried about is, and plus I want to thank the selectmen that participated in that and did finally fix the ad after decades and decades of it being that way. But I want to talk about the drag queen event. I'm glad there...
We already, it is done.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure that nothing is snuck in as drag queens, and if there is...
Well, we can't do anything about that. If something happens and, you know, somebody sees it, they can make a complaint. I don't, you can't, you know, you can't say something's gonna happen and, or...
Okay.
All right.
I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Did you revoke the entire event, or just the drag queen part of the event?
Just, just the drag queen part of it. We voted to rescind the entire event, then we voted to approve the event without the drag queen part. Yes, Mr. President?
Chairman, I'd like to thank Mrs. Carey for validating the fact that the town took part in the remedy of the solution on their property. Thank you.
Sal, I'd just like to know what could be done about having a gun show on common?
What do you mean?
A constitutionally protected event.
Sure it is.
I'd like to see what has to be done and get the ducks in a row to be able to do that.
Okay.
What, what in all...
Well, I think, I think you have to fill out the, you have to fill out the request for services form for the common, and then it'll have to go to the different chiefs, and then to us, and get approval.
Okay, thank you.
That's what everybody else does.
Can I ask a question in regards to the carnival?
Okay. I don't know if I can answer it, but go ahead.
Okay, so the carnival was approved at a different meeting that was at like the town hall?
No, it was approved here two weeks ago.
No, the carnival was in the offices, we were in the offices that night.
Oh, okay, yes.
So that wasn't televised?
No.
Okay, so my question is, is how did we get to five nights for the carnival? As someone who lives across the street from the common, five nights of 9:00 to 10:00 PM at night, you know, school nights and whatnot, how did it get to be five nights? It just seems like that's a long time.
They used to be at least four, when they had them here years ago.
As somebody who works for carnival...
There's a sign on the back wall that actually says, fourth through the seventh, so...
I almost think as these things come in, something like that, and it was the coalition that brought that to that meeting, which was down in the town office, which I wasn't aware of that they were coming. Maybe what we could do in the future is, anything like that that comes in, we'll bring here. And you have to look at the window, you have to look at the...
Sign.
The sign and the website. You know, we approved that because we were kind of excited that somebody was bringing a carnival to town. I grew up in town, I've been here 64 years. I grew up with these carnivals, there's a sign right back there that says what it is. They were fun back then, hopefully this one is fun too. I think they're only doing it from 3:00 to, I don't know, 3:00 to 10:00 or...
Nine to, nine on Thursday and Monday, and Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Yep, so it's not gonna be an all-day event. And whether you go or not, I know you live across the street and everything, and, you know, parking. Years ago, we didn't have all these people coming here. Hopefully, it's like a North Brookfield event, or like a few neighborhoods surrounding towns, so we don't have 900 cars here. But if there's no place to park, they can just go away and come the next day or something. That's how, you know, and carnivals, they don't set up for two days, because it takes them a day to set up, it takes them a day to break down. So time in between is what they have to do their thing and make the money for putting it on. We'll see how this goes. If it's not a good event, maybe it won't happen again, who knows? But, you know, we were excited that something was coming to town on the common. We didn't ask for the specifics, maybe we should have, but like I said, anything like this comes up again, while I'm on the board, I'm gonna say table it, we'll bring it to here, where you can see it on camera, and, you know, show up at that time, because then you can get inputs from the... We thought it was exciting to, so that was our take on it.
All right.
You want your two minutes? Do I get two minutes?
No.
Are we done with everything else?
Yeah.
Okay, give me two minutes.
Time's up.
May I take three? The sign on the East Brookfield Road, the Welcome to North Brookfield sign, is done. Randy Baldwin took it upon himself. It got ruined last year from the snow, and he did fix it, it's all done. He re-supported the supports. But we're looking for donations to have it put back in and to pay Randy for his efforts. The bill is about $800. We really don't have the money, and I hate to have Randy just do this for nothing. We're gonna owe him for doing that. So if anybody wants to donate to the North Brookfield, Welcome to North Brookfield sign, you can do that. Tom at North Brookfield, Port North Brookfield sign. The rail trail, someone is spray painting the signs down near Orchard Road. There's gonna be some kid that's mad because he can't run his trail bike up there. They ruined two of the signs down there last year. I have all new signs up there that we paid to have done, they're really nice. They explain everything, and it says, no dirt bikes. So apparently this kid or person doesn't like the idea, so he's spray painting over the signs. We're having a Fourth of July event, again, Board of Selectmen is gonna try to put one on. We're trying to get things going for Saturday, July 1st. Parade, hot dogs, apple pies. I've already talked to the apple pie guy, I'm trying to get a bounce house. They're gonna be face painting and stuff like that. Donations are welcome, I've already secured Brian for the music, he's gonna come. We're trying to get a band. You had a band. So Brian is gonna be there, he was there for the other Fourth of July party and for Trunk a Tree. So you all know him, he's really good, and he's reasonable. So donations for the Fourth of July would be appreciated. What's that, oh, your timing? The little pack, I gotta get going. The little pack in the center of town, we're looking for donations for the upkeep. Mindy and I have been spending our own money on stuff over there. We just can't do it anymore, we'll do the work and stuff, keep the grass mowed. But we're looking for donations, and there's an outstanding bill for materials from last year for some of the work that was done down there. Thank you for coming tonight, living in this town shouldn't be this hard. The playground, last Saturday, we did a cleanup. Tara, Tara Hayes and these guys over here...
Tara, Tara Hayes and these guys over here coordinated it. I went down and Michael and Jamie were there, and Kristen and Mario were there. We got the, the diamond done. I'm a little over, but I'm sorry. Give me two and a half, Sue.
You're so brave.
So thank you all for showing up. There's still more work to be done. They got a lot of leaves done. We did the, Jamie and I did the diamond. So that's all set for the ballgames, and hopefully we get the, the groups that came last year. They, they did tournaments down there. Still hats made like four grand that they donated.
John, you can have my two minutes.
Thanks, Sue. Thank you, Michelle.
Donating them.
So that, you know, the town is, is really moving along. People are out in the rail trail. They're looking, eating down at the park. They go and get their chicken and their roast beef sandwiches. Quaybog Fibram is using the park over here. We have somebody that wants to donate one more bench over there. I'm gonna talk with her this week. Ashley got me the price for it last week, so let's keep things humming in town, and that's it. How much time did I take, Sue?
Three minutes and 23 seconds.
That, that's not bad.
Thirty-seven seconds.
Not yet. Entertaining motion to adjourn. So moved.
Do we have planning for Quaybog Hills? No? Meeting scheduled?
Which one's that?
Announcements? Oh, it's an announcement. Show me the announcement.
Jason needs another two minutes because he missed me up. Oh, you're reading that? I'm just gonna jump out here for a second. So is this for everybody? This invitation? All right. So everybody's, everybody's invited to this event here. Says come join us in planning for the health of the Quaybog Hills community. We're looking for community members and local organizations to help in the process of creating and implementing the Quaybog Hills Community Health Improvement Plan, Q H C H I P. We want to reflect the needs and experiences of the Quaybog Hills community. Come join us at our next general body meeting Wednesday, April 12th, 2023, from 5:30 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at 308 Lakeside. Dinner will be provided. And then Thursday, April 20th, that one's there at the Palmer Library. Dinner's provided. And Wednesday, April 26th, 1:00 p.m. to 2:30 p.m. via Zoom. That's bring your own, I guess. All right. Now, we have a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Do I get another two minutes? No.
No. Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight and tuning in.